There's some hearing assistance devices up there if y'all were to need them. And also, if you can't hear, if you feel like someone's not speaking loud enough, please raise your hand and I will tell them to speak louder. Also, your cell phones, if you would turn those on to silent, I would appreciate it. And we're going to move on to agenda item number three, the approval of the agenda.
Stat has no changes to the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second, have a motion of second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Moving on to proclamations and presentations. Our first one is the certificates of graduation for the 2017 Mayor's Youth Council. And our meeting got a late start because our Mayor's Youth Council, this is our first year of having a Mayor's Youth Council, and they ended their year of serving by having a mock council meeting, and they did a very good job. So I'm real proud of these students. So I've got some certificates that I'm going to give to each of them.
And very briefly, while you are going to the wall of appreciation, I would ask that the five students who are getting the certificate, please come up to vote in. And why don't you come and line up in front of the city council? And the mayor and the vice mayor will join you there. While you are going there, I'll explain to the audience what they went through to get those certificates. So why don't you make your way up here? While the Mayor's Youth Council makes its way up here for recognized, for being recognized for graduating from the Mayor's Youth Council, I'll give you a summary of what they, up front here, they had to do. They had to attend at least four city council meetings. They had to read the entire city charter from beginning to end and write a brief report on it. They had to shadow a department, identify its organizational chart, and write a summary of the department that they were shadowing, present that. Let me back up. Each council member was paired with a real city council member. Once they were paired with that real city council member, they had to write the reports on the charter, submit that to the council member, the council member rated it. They also had to shadow a department, submit that to the department, to their council member, and get that graded. They also were to attend two community functions, of which a city council member was to be at. They did that too. Then they were to attend a mock city council meeting, which we just had. All five of them sat up here for the last hour, voted in a mayor, a vice mayor, and listened to five controversial items. And so they went through that and finished that. Having successfully completed all of the items, which all of them did, they are now going to get their certificate from the mayor and the city council. And with that, I'll let the mayor walk over, and the council walk over, join them, and give them their certificates.
I want to get all councils' pictures of them. So I'm going to go ahead and give you your certificates while they're gathering around. Kayla Livingston.
Thank you.
And your council member was?
Troy Singer.
Troy Singer. Okay. Next, we have Reagan Hanawal. And Reagan, your council member was? Kirby Smith. And we have Carly Pauline. And Amanda Bogus was hers. And then we had our elected vice mayor, who was Abigail Laura. There we go. And the mayor, the elected mayor, was Mick Pepper. So why don't y'all open those up and hold them up? And then we're going to get all your council members. So hold them, so, like, hold them, double them up, you know what I'm saying? Yeah, get next to your people.
These are Taverri's High School students.
Everybody hold up your certificates. You come a little bit closer and make sure we all get in.
Yeah, everybody's in. Big smiles. And one more.
And I'm so very proud of them. They, as our inaugural Mayor's Youth Council, they definitely rose to the occasion, and they made us proud. So thank you all for serving. Thank you.
I would ask that the youth council, the elected mayor, go to the speaker format and just give us just one or two words. Thank you. Anything you learned, anything you, what you thought of government before, what you thought about in government after, anything, just something.
Being in the Mayor's Youth Council gave me a greater feeling of how government runs and how coordinated everything has to be for a whole country, the function, and how far we've, you know, from studying history, came from just fighting a lot of wars to sitting down and discussing things. It's very interesting to see it live and how progressive it is. It's a great experience. I learned how a city just flows much better and how the department heads kind of are like, you know, chanting command and how everything works. It's just all very, it's pretty genius how everything is just so smooth and it's awesome to live in a country like that.
Thank you.
And I didn't say, but Mick was my, Mick was my protege, so you see, I called him well. He was elected mayor, so. All right, we're going to move on to the presentation to Taverri's Library Board Chairman. "On behalf of everyone at the City of Taverri's, we offer our congratulations as you celebrate a significant anniversary of serving for 25 years as a president of the Library Advisory Board." And this is Mr. Charles Fox.
And if you would come up?
Come on up. While I finish. We know that our growth and success is dependent on having devoted and capable team of volunteers such as you. And we want to recognize the contributions you have made in helping us in achieving our library goals. To honor your years of service to the city, we present to you a plaque commemorating your dedication of time, talent, and service to our community. We hope that this award will always remind you of the appreciation for your hard work and dedication. Thank you for all you have done serving as president of the Library Advisory Board during our 25 years of service and for your ongoing commitment to the Taverri's Public Library Advisory Board. The City of Taverri's Public Library Advisory Board was created to govern, regulate, and encourage organized activities at the library system operated by the city. The board consists of seven volunteers to be appointed by the mayor and approved by the city council. The terms are for two years and two positions do not require residency. The present members of the Library Board are Charles Fox, President; Martha Wilkins, Vice President; Mary Ellen Dries; Judy Eaton; Linda Klebs; Jim Shepherd; and Duane DeMent. Would you like to say a few words before I present you with your plaque?
Thank you very much. We were supposed to talk about the library budget.
Can't trust a politician.
If you would join the mayor and the vice mayor at the wall of appreciation between those two flags, we're going to take a photograph. And again, thank you for 25 years of service to our library board.
How you doing? I've known him for a long time. Thank you. Do you have anything else you want to say? You can get up there and keep talking.
My whole history?
Thank you for everything you do. It's volunteers like this that makes Taverri's quite a good place to live, and thank you. Thank you. Yep, I remember when you helped build Blute Park. I sure do remember that.
Yep, that's the catalyst of the city. It's the only park with a pavilion on one side and a seaplane base on the other.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Okay, now we're going to move on to tab three, proclamation of Public Works Week, May 21st through 27th. Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of and understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewer, streets, and highways, public buildings, solid waste collection, parks, and canal maintenance, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, designing, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Whereas this year's theme, Public Works, connects us, speaks to all the pervasive effort of public works professionals and their projects while bringing quality of life contributions and the necessities of our communities to the citizens of the world. Now therefore, the city council of the City of Taverri's, Florida, does hereby proclaim the week of May 21st through May 27th, 2017, as National Public Works Week. And calls upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions that public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life, past and newly adopted in regular session the 17th day of May, 2017.
And the actual proclamation will be presented to the Public Works Director this weekend at the annual Public Works Expo at Wooton Park, which begins at?
Ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock and goes till?
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock. It's pretty cool because you'll get to see a child operate a garbage truck lifting device, pick up couches and things, and bring them up, and put them down, and do all sorts of things. But it's a great place to bring children and grandchildren to see how public works in a city and actually touch and feel all the equipment your Taverri's Public Works Department uses. So we'll see you there, and hopefully those who can make it, we'll see you there as well.
All right, thank you. All right, now we're going to move on to tab four, proclamation and plaque presentation to Jacques Scott, his retirement. So Jacques, in a moment, I'm going to have you meet me at the wall of fame, okay? This red. Whereas Jacques Scott began his 40-year public service career at Sarnia Township, Ontario, Canada, in 1978, and whereas Jacques Scott began his career at the City of Taverri's in 2007, is a director of community development, and whereas Jacques Scott received a technology degree in civil engineering at Fanchall College and a certification in municipal administration at McMaster University in Canada, and whereas Jacques Scott has had a rich and robust career as a civil servant in management, building code administration, planning, and municipal accounting, and municipal administration, and whereas Jacques Scott has been a strong and steady leader highlighted by an impeccable sense of service, ethics, and accountability to the city council, city staff, and citizens up to Taverri's. And now therefore be resolved that I, Mayor Lori Pfister, on behalf of the entire city council, city staff, and citizens up to Taverri's, do hereby proclaim special thanks, recognition, and appreciation to Jacques Scott for his outstanding contributions and dedication during these past 10 years to the City of Taverri's, America's Seaplane City. So Jacques, if you'll meet me down front.
I've been asked to read while we get together for photographs, a plaque given by Taverri's America's Seaplane City. Throughout your 10 years of service with the City of Taverri's, you have been a calm, subject matter expert and professional leader, Jacques. It is clear that your dedication to the citizens of Taverri's has had a significant lasting and meaningful impact on the reputation of the City of Taverri's. Your professional acumen and thoughtful approach to resolving problems, large and small, has proved that it doesn't take a loud voice to make a difference for present and future generations of Taverrians. While you will be greatly missed, your accomplishments and contributions during a remarkable 10-year career for the City of Taverri's will not be forgotten. It has been our honor and our privilege to serve with you, Jacques. Thank you for being a tireless professional, a trusted colleague, and a friend. Congratulations on your retirement, presented by the entire leadership team and city councils, council of the City of Taverri's. Thank you, Jacques.
I wanted y'all to hear that. That's what was on his plaque. And most of the time, people will take these plaques and then they go on home with them, and then no one ever knows how, how we really felt about this man. So you're just loading up here. You got two hands? All right.
All right, perfect. Perfect, thank you. I'm at the point to say that I'm calling, well, I don't know if I'm exactly calling right now. Really, I think, you know, the honor and the privilege should be mine for working for this city. Working, it's been such an honor to work for the, for the citizens of this city, for working for this board, for the, for the members of this board, previous to this board here for the last 10 years, to our planning and zoning board, which I've worked closely with for the last 10 years, to Mr. Drury, our city administrator, who's been a mentor to me for the last 10 years, to Bob Williams, who has always had an answer for every question you can imagine, to our, our city staff, who's all worked together as a team with one goal in mind. It's been actually my privilege to work in this city, and I wish you all the best of luck. Thank you very much.
Okay, we're moving on to agenda item five, surrender by City Attorney, disclosure of ex parte contacts.
No, pardon, yes, the mayor.
Okay, we're moving on to agenda item six, reading all ordinances, resolutions entered record, City Clerk Susie Novak.
Thank you, Mayor. There are two ordinances, one at first reading, ordinance 2017-7, the ordinance of the City of Taverri's Florida, amending the redevelopment regulation, amending chapter 13, environmental, to create a new Division VII entitled fertilizer use, adopting a Florida Department of Environmental Protection Model Ordinance for Florida-Friendly Fertilizer Use on Urban Landscapes, provided for sustainability, provided for effective date. And ordinance 2006, the second reading, an ordinance of the City of Taverri's Florida, amending table 8-3, development standards in section 8-11D2, accessory uses and structures in non-residential districts, which will reduce zero the required street setback for performing accessory uses, accessory structures, and building faces less than 30 feet in length, unless otherwise permitted by the government, as a plan and development ordinance, ordinance for properties located within the adopted downtown waterfront entertainment as designated in ordinance 2016-36, subject to the rules, regulations, and obligations for taking that the City of Taverri's Council, provided for effective date.
Thank you, Susie. All right, we're moving on to agenda item six, that's what we just did, move on to number seven, the consent agenda. Does anyone have, in the audience, have anything that they do not agree with on the consent agenda, or how many questions? All right, council?
I'd like to pull tab six, Mayor.
All right, council?
Make a motion, go ahead, Bob. Make a motion, move forward, minus ten seconds.
One second. All right, we have a motion of second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Right, we're moving on to tab, that passes five to zero. Tab six, approval of FDEP grant agreement for a CRA stormwater, Brad Hayes.
Maybe we'll let the council member ask the question, or if you want the whole presentation.
I just wanted to, Mr. Haynes, you could just go up to the, okay. Could you just give us just a little bit of a background on this grant that you received? And that is going to be useful.
Yes, thank you. An overview is, is with the building of this stormwater pond, creating a park area, there was very limited parking area down there in that part of the, the park. And what I did was, I created a parking area on the city's property down there utilizing previous pavers so that, that you wouldn't have to build any detention ponds, detention ponds would not have to deploy any more water off into Lake, Lake Eustis. So by doing this, after I got it designed, I went back to DEP, asked DEP, because they have money for these types of programs. And I worked with DEP and actually received two grants, two separate grants, but combined them into one, at a total of $385,000 in order to build this parking lot for the benefit of the, Taverri's residents, so that, and visitors, to Taverri's to park down there near the new park and have an area of parking. And it'll also be utilized, it can also used as an overflow parking lot for the boat airplane rent down there and the boat trailers down there.
And approximately how many spaces do you think that's going to?
Well, we're looking at probably about, I think it's a total of about almost two dozen spaces.
Yeah, I mean, I know that these grants are not easy to get. I know they're not easy to apply for, and I just want to thank you and the staff, and, you know, just let the residents know that, you know, a lot of these things that we see, these projects that are done in the City of Taverri's, they're done with a lot of grant money, and a lot of times, you know, we don't realize that as citizens. And I'd just like to see, you know, maybe some kind of recognition, some kind of sign, or maybe even in the newsletter, that we make the citizens aware whenever we do receive these grants, because, you know, it's something that's, you know, really worthwhile, and I just commend you and the staff on being able to get this, because it's my understanding that we would not be able to have this parking space if it wasn't for these grants, is that correct?
That's correct.
So I just wanted to thank you for pursuing that and all your hard work to get you on that. Just keep it up. With that, I'd like to make a motion that we approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion of second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to agenda item eight, which is our ordinances and resolutions. And remember, first readings, we only read into the record, they will be discussed at second reading. So our second reading will be down to tab nine, ordinance 27, 2017-06, LDR amendment for zero street setbacks in downtown Entertainment District, Jacques.
Yes, on March 15th, city council instructed staff to prepare an amendment to our land development regulations that would reduce zero the minimum street setback of buildings and accessory structures within our downtown waterfront entertainment district. We've talked about this before, but essentially what this ordinance does, it gives a zero front yard setback that is presently applicable to buildings on Main Street, and we apply that standard uniformly throughout our downtown waterfront entertainment district. The only two exceptions would be if it was a dumpster that needs to be the side or the rear yard, or if it happens to be a structure that is used for a purpose that is not permitted in the land development regulations. At the moment, I can only think of a couple of instances of single boundary dwellings on Ruby Street, they could not be expanded for that use out to the main, main front property line. At its April 20th meeting, the planning and zoning board ordered unanimously to recommend approval of ordinance 2017-06, and staff disrecommending that city council moves to approve ordinance 2017-06.
All right, council, y'all have any questions for Jacques?
No questions, but just thank you for taking all of our considerations into consideration in developing a, a ordinance that fits very well for the Entertainment District. So thank you for that. Like to make a motion to approve?
Second.
No motion of second, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Okay, we're moving on to tab 10, City of Taverri's Golf Course Discussion, John Drury.
Attached is a letter from the Bay Tree Villas Homeowners Association requesting that the city consider purchasing and operating the Bay Tree Golf Course as a municipal golf course. Also attached is the prospectus put out by the commercial real estate agent, who is the listing agent, Rick Gonzalez, a Crosby associate. I believe both the HOA representative and the real estate representative are here in the audience today. By way of summary, the 89-acre Bay Tree Golf Course is for sale and listed at $1.18 million. It is being offered and marketed as a redevelopment housing project, that is, to redevelop the golf course into 118 homes. However, farm offers will be considered, and in theory, if the purchaser wanted to keep it as a golf course, it could include the existing items. And those items are an 89-acre golf course, a cafe and pro shop, a carp barn, equipment and buildings, a parking lot, a shuffleboard court, forty golf carts, mowers, and miscellaneous equipment. I have provided you the most recent general information on public golf courses that is out there for your review. I did review the most current webinar on this subject matter and provided that to you as well. A 2014 webinar on the median cost in the United States to maintain a golf course is $1.2 million annually. Should be noticed, noted that this is an executive golf course. Should be noticed, noted that this is an executive golf course, much smaller, and therefore one could assume that it would be less than that average of one point two, the lowest amount I've seen a golf course cost going through, my research was about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, and that would be for a small municipal golf course. Through my research, golf courses have been purchased in the past by, in a very, for various purposes, in various different ways. So I'm going to, I've provided you basically research on what has been, what I've seen in the past with these items come up. For example, it could be redeveloped as a, as a housing area, and that is what is currently being marketed and sold as. We have seen where an HOA that abuts a golf course, assesses itself, and then they purchase the golf course, so that they have access to the golf court, and have the golf course remain. I've also seen HOAs purchase golf courses, abutting them, and shut them down, and turn them into buffer space, green space. They get out of the business of operating the golf course, they keep it as open green space, and they mow it once a month with one of those big mowers type things. We're also seeing, when I was in Naples area, two or three golf, two or three HOAs will get together, assess all three of the HOAs, or four HOAs, and then they will buy the golf course, and they will get membership for all their homes at all four HOAs. So that's an option I've seen out there. I've seen it where the owner of the golf course has donated the golf course to the HOA, I've seen it where they've donated to the city as well. And probably won't see that here. And I've also seen it where a city has purchased a golf course, and that is the current request that the HOA has before you. And I've also seen it where a city purchases a golf course and turns it into a park, that's happened too. And I've also seen it where a county purchases a golf course and turns it into a county park as well. So, when a golf course goes out to market, there are many, many options that have occurred in Florida, and before you, it is an option to consider purchasing it and turning it into a city golf course. As I said, there, there may be some additional speakers, but I do know that the president of the HOA is here, and the person representing the landowner is here as well. I give it back to you, counsel, for discussion and direction.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jerry. Right, counsel, would y'all like to discuss this first, or would you like to hear some of people from the audience?
I'd love to hear.
Okay, so, I'm gonna open it up and let some of you come up from the audience, please keep your remarks to about two minutes. That's two minutes, and I'm gonna time you. And also, and don't be repetitive, I mean, if the person before you says, just stand up and say, "I agree," or whatever, so we don't hear the same thing. So make sure when you come up, you state your name and your address for the, for record. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Richard Danker, I'm twenty-three oh nine Baywater Road, I've been a resident of Baywater, Baywa, Bay Tree Homeowners Associate, for twenty years. I wrote the letter, Mayor, yes, and the golf course did come up for sale. The reason for our writing the letter is because we've had numerous conversations in the, in our community about, about the, about the golf course, and the advantage of the golf course to the city. We think that there's probably an opportunity for the city to look at this executive course, which has been there for twenty years, as a municipal, as a municipal type golf course. In the audience here, we have, I'm here as the Bay Tree HOA president, but in addition to that, there are people here from Fox Run, the Groves, and there are people here that have played this golf course for the last twenty years, which has been a successful golf course over the years. Things change, people, people get older, and it's an opportunity, I think, for, for the city to look at acquiring this as an asset. The city itself has done a lot of things over the years, over the past years, to promote city activities and so on, and this, I think, would be another alternative for you to look at promoting that type of activity. Any questions? Thank you.
All right, next.
I would have thought with that many residents coming around a golf course, there would be more people speaking, but I'm Denise Alon from Royal Harbor, and I would just like to, I don't know if this is a good idea or not for a city to own a golf course, but I was taken by the fiscal impact that's had as a rule of thumb, it requires a subsidy from taxpayers to break through, and that concerns me. So I would hope that if the city does look into purchasing this and maintaining it as a golf course or anything else, particularly as a golf course, that they get past profit and loss statements from the owners, and see actually whether this is something profitable to run, or something that's going to be required subsidies, and how much those subsidies would be. Thank you.
All right, someone else?
Good afternoon, my name is Anna Mosser, and I live at four thirty-one Juniper Way. I'm the treasurer of the Bay Tree HOA, and Dick has already stated why we think it would be an excellent idea for the city to acquire the course, to maintain what has been there. It surrounds our community, and we also think it would be a great opportunity for the city to use it for youth clinics, to bring people out to play golf together, also to promote tourism, and draw people that are here already for events to come out and play at our course. And so I hope that you would consider it. Most of the people here are from Bay Tree and Fox Run, and do support this, and really like to see it continue as a golf course.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else?
My name is Diana Eaton, I'm at seven fourteen North St. Clair Abrams Avenue in Tewerys. I just want to state for the record that I agree with Denise, we need to look at the numbers, and see where we stand before we would consider moving forward with this. Thank you.
Is that all? All right, counsel? Someone's got to get up?
My name is Don Strom, live at four 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 Kingway, and I think it'd be a great asset for the city, cheap lane city, tourists, you've got new hotels going up and stuff like that, people coming in, it's a growing community, it's not that big of a job to take care of the golf course, which maintain, right, when you let it go to heck all the way, and it's gonna take a little bit to get it back together, which could be considered in the bid for it. But I think it'd be a real asset for the city, for the tourism.
All right, counsel, why don't we, why don't we start with, I'm gonna start with counsel member longest?
I guess my number one concern in running a golf course is how much you possibly maintain a golf course. In Florida grass, anyone's yard is hard to maintain, so a golf course is really expensive, especially if we're going through a dry season like we are currently, just having to water it. I definitely would be interested to see how many golfers actually go to the golf course, or how we could attract additional golfers if we were to invest, because I've asked around who actually goes golfing, and where they go golfing, why they prefer that golf course over another, and no one thinks Bay Tree is their top course, so in order to make it attractive to people to go golf, what would we need to do, if we were to invest, to make it attractive for the course to come together? But mostly, it's the maintenance and running it, and who would be actually employed to maintain it, be staff at the shop, maintain those buildings, who would be owning buildings, or will there just be ones available to us? I have a lot of questions about how would we finance it, whether it'd be physically responsible, does it take it all?
Thank you. Counselor member, good ear.
Well, several things. First of all, I live down there, in a whip view in Dead River, and so the golf course is like my neighbor, and I love the green space, I love the golf, I'd rather have the green space than the homes there, at Lake House surrounds. It also will enhance the value of my property as well, being right there. Now, we have something there, but we've got to, we've got to pimp now, because where are we gonna get the money, how are we gonna fund this, there's a lot to put in place here. Do I run it? I'd love to have it. But we gotta really, really crunch this in order to make a decision if we're gonna best go ahead and purchase something like this. But I would love to have it too.
All right, counsel member Smith.
I'm very familiar with Bay Tree Golf Course, and I apologize to some of y'all, because I'm sure I've hit some of your houses. Sorry about that. But as you may or may not know, I make just about all my decisions on facts. We don't have enough facts to even start to discuss this yet. We don't know, first of all, we don't know the actual land value, we don't know what it's supposedly gonna be, we don't know, haven't seen the appraisal, don't know the value of the buildings, don't know the value of the equipment, we don't know the participation rate, we don't know the maintenance costs, and there's a lot of things that we don't know yet. So, without that information, I can't even make a halfway informed decision, so I think if we're even gonna try to consider this, we gotta have the information first, before consideration maybe possibly be made.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, Senator.
I mean, I completely agree that, you know, I don't want to see Bay Tree Golf Course gone, I definitely want to see it, you know, stay. I think this is a very interesting proposal, I realize that this is, you know, maybe just the first step that Bay Tree is taking towards, you know, just seeing if the city is interested. Because, you know, there's some other options that are on the table, for example, I like the one about, you know, the group, HOA, gotta get together and maybe, you know, working out something with that, I know you said there's, you know, there are people here from Fox Run, and the Grove, and we've got Royal Harbor right across the street there, so, you know, and I completely agree with what counsel member Smith said, we just, we don't have enough facts to move forward on something like this. You know, is it gonna be subsidized by the residents of Tewerys? I just, you know, don't think that's fair to all the other residents, you know, to burden on them. You know, I would, I would just hate to see, you know, the residents that aren't playing golf, you know, subsidize, you know, the residents that are. I just, I'd like to see a lot more facts before we move forward on this.
All right, thank you. And I guess I'm in agreement with all of y'all, I actually like Bay Tree a whole lot, it's the only course that I can get to quickly at five o'clock in the afternoon, on a summer day, and get eighteen holes in before the sun goes down, so. And it's a tough little course, for a, for an executive course, I mean, it's definitely, you've got some wide open, but there's some tight ones too. I think three's a, is it three or four, that tough little hole with the green that tilts? But anyway, I'm in agreement with them, I mean, I don't want to see the golf course go away, I would rather somehow the homeowners figure out how to take it, but if that's not to be, I would definitely entertain some ideas, and, but I'm definitely gonna have to see the numbers also, all the numbers that all of them talked about, I mean, that's all so important. But, but I don't want it to go away, it reminds me of Silver Lake, I can remember I was a, my family was members of Silver Lake, and bought stock into it, and then it closed down, and the house, the home values all went plummeted, once the, once the course went down, and I would hate to see that happen to y'all, but that's just a fact, that that's usually what happens. So, I would like the counsel, you know, I'd like to hear a motion of how y'all would like to go with this. Yes.
I think, well, John, I looked at this proposal, the list, as with any time that we're, that the city is thinking of purchasing a piece of real estate, which is what this is, there are statutes that govern us doing that, which involves obtaining professional appraisals. In this instance, you also have the business appraisal, and so it's not just a real estate appraisal, it's a professional appraisal. So I think what we were looking for, those things cost money, you know, they're not, they're not free, and they're not, frankly, they're not terribly cheap. So before we go into that, I think that's what we're looking for. We understand that you don't have enough facts today, but I think what we're looking today is, did you, you want us to spend money and resources to look into acquiring this? That's really more, I think, of what we're looking for today.
Do you have a cost or?
I think there's maybe a two-step process. The first step is, I can bring you back more facts on what other cities are finding for the cost to operate, and the cost to, and revenues, that's all about information, and there are city-run golf courses. The goal would be to find a similar city golf course, and, as a public golf course, to obtain the numbers, what does it cost to run a golf course in, say, Florida, and is there one similar to that? I'm hearing you'd like to know how much of a subsidy is gonna be required by the city, if you know municipal golf courses are generally subsidized. The next question is the land value, if we can probably pull back the property appraiser on land value.
You can make the, you can certainly get an idea, I think you still gonna have to have a professional appraisal if you decide to go forward with your contract, but you're right, we can get your ballpark.
I guess, I guess what I'm saying is, before we go out and appraise property and spend all this money, first thing we might want to do is explore, what is a reasonable cost to acquire, reasonable cost to run a golf course, what is the annual subsidy to a golf course, and what would be the trend analysis for the next ten years on that subsidy? Because there's lots of good trending information on what's going on with golf courses and subsidies and the cost of them. Bring that back to you, and you can bet that. If at that time you want to move it forward, you would need to allocate some money to go appraise, and negotiate, authorize the attorney, consider administrative report with it, you obviously need to identify funding sources and things like that. So, there are two options, one is to just go forward, allocate some dollars to go appraise, the other is to ask staff to do some research on similar municipal golf courses, and what are the numbers? And, you know, the land value, there's a, you know, the, the real estate developers represented is here, they have a number that they have in mind, and then there's an appraisal, those are usually very different, we all know that. I don't, I don't know if, Rick, do you have anything to ask? Rick Gonzalez, who works for Crosby Real Estate and represents the owner, correct?
Yes, I represent the owner today. The fact of the matter is, the property's being sold as a, as John outlined, as a development site. It is not being sold as an operating golf course. It is subject to negotiations, if you want all the stuff, which otherwise we've just sold off. I agree with everything you've said today, I think that a, you might consider doing a parallel path of having the appraisal done, at the same time that you're evaluating what it costs to run a golf course. Conceptually, I can imagine that there's people out there that run golf courses, maybe you've got one of them. you've got one of them coming and give you a proposal saying, here's a golf course, what would you charge us to run it? That would give you one number to work with, plus all the other research that you do. Because, the reason I say that is just, there's other people looking at it, and there's no telling whether, if it'll ever sell, but there are.
Thank you. I just wanted to see if you had anything additional to add to your benefit. So one option is for staff to go out and provide more information, and the next, and then if you want to go further after the more information, then you would be involved in spending, you know, dollars to appraise, but you've got to get an appraisal before you purchase it.
And they have research, and they have runs, the cost of running a golf course, because I'd also be kind of concerned about the staff that we have, various, Chris and everybody, additional people that we hired simply to maintain a golf course.
There'll be golf course managers, there'll be golf course greenkeepers, all the things.
Mayor, I would like to make a motion for option two, which is discuss and table their item for a future meeting to obtain more information as a result of the discussion. And, and staff, the trend in the averages are good enough for me right now, so we can get a good idea of where it's going on that. Option two.
Senator, second option two, and do you think you'd be able to have some of that information for the next meeting?
No. I would say this would take about a month to pull together the numbers that, for this preliminary, so we are at the end of May, so it'd be second meeting in June, June the 17th. What's the second meeting? What's the next meeting? Maybe it's February. Second, third Wednesday of June.
Can we have a motion in a second? Any more discussion?
Just real quick, as the ones who mentioned ballpark figures, and I just want to make it clear that these figures that we will be getting are like pretty solid as far as little, plus my guess, that they are pretty solid ballpark figures.
There's, there are, there are issues. As you heard, the golf course is not up to par, unintended, and I'm sure that the residents are going to want the golf course up to par. I would never be able to give you an exact number of what it's going to take to get that golf course up to a standard where you won't have a room full of people saying, yeah, maintain the golf course. So there's a cost of purchase, there's going to be a cost to rehabilitate the golf course so it's acceptable, and then there's going to be an estimated cost to manage the golf course, maintain the golf course, and all of the fertilizer and equipment, et cetera, those with it. You will not have an accurate number that you're looking for, you're going to have an estimate based on what other municipal golf courses in Florida are experiencing. If you get a chance to go to the seminar, I did do a webinar, and I hope everybody reads this agenda summary and looks at the webinar. It's a great webinar on golf courses in Florida and what it costs to manage them and maintain them, et cetera. Very well done, in my opinion, and what you're going to find, the takeaway is, the cost of managing and maintaining a golf course depends, and it depends as to what level you want to keep it at, how green you want to keep it, how well-maintained you want to keep it. And it varies from, there's golf courses that are up in the four, five, ten million dollars a year because they are impeccable, then there's ones that are costing a couple hundred thousand a year because they're not. Question this council will have to make is to what level do you think your citizens are going to want this golf course maintained, and that's going to drive the cost. What I'm going to do is take, look for golf courses around Florida that are of similar nature and size, and pull the public records for the cost to maintain them and operate, and how much the city subsidy is. And I'm going to try to get you a trend of where it's been and where it's headed. We'll have that information for you. Also, I'm going to get you a number of what the property appraiser has the property appraised at, and if the owner of the property will share their current numbers, I have to talk to the real estate broker about that, I have that too. So you'll have current numbers of the current operator, if they will share that, unaudited, but presented. You're going to have the, the numbers of other golf courses, and you'll have what the property appraiser has appraised at, and you'll have what the asking prices to. The cost of rehabilitating a golf course, I will do my best to get you the number on that, but there's no doubt in my mind that that course, you will want to rehabilitate that golf course and take it up to where it is today in order to be a municipal golf course. I don't think you can operate it the way I, the way I've, the way it currently is, it will need attention. So you're going to have a bunch of numbers that give you those, that's a long answer to your question, but the answer is I will, it would, it will not be an exact number. You would, the only way I'd get you an exact number is you purchase it and run it for two years and then go.
All right. Thank you, John.
I have one, Mr. Johnson, the due diligence probably should go grab and check, they'll need St. John permits and for watering, golf courses to be water used, and the best practices for herbicides and stuff like that. I just, I just want to say, I mean, I'd like, in the direction that we're heading in, I would like to maybe recommend to the HOA that, you know, continue to pursue other avenues, you know, as Mr. Drury mentioned, you know, maybe look over the, in the packet in that webinar, because, you know, there's some other good options that are in here, and I don't know, Mr. Drury, have you had an opportunity to speak to Mr. Dankert about some of these options that you provided the council in here?
No, you know, if you have, get a copy of the agenda summary, you know, but the options that are in there are something your HOA may want to look at, you know, want to, government moves slowly for a good reason, and that is to really vet out the issue before decisions are made, dollars are spent, and unintended consequences occur. The point being is that it sounds as though this council wants to move, move methodically and intelligently and fiscally properly, that's going to take time. The property's for sale today. Rick tells me he gets a call every, what, week or two on the property? There's people, what?
Twice a month.
Twice a month. Twice a month. There's, there are people interested in purchasing that property and putting 110 homes on it now. The private sector, that's you, the HOA, can move at lightning speed, a lot faster than government. And so there are some options out there that were provided to the council of how HOAs get together, assess themselves, purchase, set up a 501(c), and run a golf course. And if you get enough HOAs together, it's not as expensive than just one HOA doing it. So that was one of the options that you're talking about. Point is, is in this agenda summary, it's on the website, it's, there's, are we out of here?
Right.
I will send you a, I will send the HOA president a copy of this agenda summary. In it are many options that are available, and it's just something you might want to explore as we, the government, move forward to review the options, which, as I said, I'm going to do my best for the next thirty days to get as much information as I can to this council for their second meeting in June, the third Wednesday of June. I will be presenting them the information.
All right. Thank you. Any more discussion? Can we have a motion second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. All right. Town 11, Board Appointments, Library Board, Planning and Zoning Board. So there are three seats with expiring terms on the Library Board for the term June 2017 through 2019, and three seats with expiring terms on the Planning and Zoning Board for the term 20, June 2017 through 2019. The city received the following appointment request from the current board members. Library Board, Linda Clutz, Delane DeMent, Martha Wilkins. Planning and Zoning Board, Gary Santoro, Richard Root, and Morris Osborne. The city advertised the open positions in the April 25, 2017 edition of the Daily Commercial and City Website, City Court's page. No new applications were received, so I congratulate Linda Clutz, Delane DeMent, Martha Wilkins for the Library Board, and I congratulate Planning and Zoning Board, Gary Santoro, Richard Root, Morris Osborne. Thank you for your hard, continued work. Okay, so now we're going to go to old business. Is there any old business?
I don't know if this would be old business or not, but I think I would like an update on the, on the issue we had on Cedar Avenue and how that's going, by Woodley, and then an update on the sand pile over at...
We'll let the chief give an update on Cedar, then I'll do an update on... Chief, did you want to do that or no?
I'll take care of that.
No, are you going to give us an update?
You want to do it?
Oh, I don't have the, oh, all right. I'll give an update. So the chief and his team, that's the, the owners of that development, correct?
The Cedar Avenue area?
Yes.
Yes.
Which one are you talking about?
There's two issues.
Jack?
The first one I think chief can't answer today because of the, they don't, I don't know what's going on currently today.
Okay, should you?
Cedar Avenue, the customer complained with the rip rap going up and down the, chief went out there and talked to it about a month ago, right? You upped your patrol and you upped some... You talking about Rosewood? Nope. Cedar Avenue, code enforcement issues.
Yes.
Yes, okay, yes. Yes, we have a lot out there. I don't have exact numbers of what we've done, but I can prepare for you an actual what we've done since we last spoke. That's our one. That'd be great. And then, you know, the issue about the...
It's in the evening.
Right, the hill, I know that they're supposed to be doing something, so the next council meeting within two weeks, I'd like to know what they have actually done.
Right. Any more old business and new business? Okay. Audience to be heard.
Benny Burley, 214 North Hampshire Ave. Before I give the history bit, I have an update on April Williams von Maxi. My daughter-in-law is her aunt, and she says that she's been home for a week and a half, and her son who's a senior and on the football team, she has been going to watch the workout. And so the prayer village officials really worked for her. They didn't expect her to live, and then they thought that she would have to have a lung transplant. So anyway, the 5K fundraiser is this Saturday at Hickman Point. Now for the history bit. I'm sure that most of you have seen the old TB Brogans of Walker Texas Ranger with Turk Norris, a reverbzer on today. Well, I came across an article in the Daily Commercial, not that the Berry's isn't, of 5/23/2001, only sixteen years ago, so maybe some of you had read the article. It was written by a good friend of mine and a fellow historian, Rick Reed, and some of you may remember, he wrote the Reminisc column, which was usually a full page, but now he is down to a small column on Lake County, Did You Know? Regrans of Walker Ranger was very popular in Jamaica. A group of twenty-seven on their fourth mission trip from First Presbyterian Church in Niesburg went there to work on a building for the Humber Home for Children, an orphanage. And this is what happened last year on their third mission. A child asked one of the males with some beard growth if he was Walker, and the person said yes, thinking he was asked if he was a hiper. Then she said, you're Walker Ranger. So much of that mission for that person was spent entertaining the kids. They would come up to him and show him martial arts chops and kicks, just like Walker, and even the adults called him Walker. He didn't shave because there was no hot water where the mission stayed. He takes a week from work to pay for the privilege to work on a three-story building that had been under construction for seven years, and that person is here in this room, and does anyone want to guess who he is? Anybody read that article? No? Will the real Walker Ranger please stand up?
That was sixteen years and probably thirty pounds. That was good. Rick Reed was, Rick Reed was my friend, and he would do the song, he's a great guy.
All right. Anybody else in the audience to be heard? Ms. Lorada.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a request that I know you've heard many times before, and it's very difficult to hear most of you in the audience, so could you either please speak closer to your microphones or get a new system? Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we're going to move on to records.
I just want to come in here. Maybe he'll tell us.
Keith?
Dan, what did, Josh? It's been a pleasure working with you. Good luck, and I'll see you on Spotify.
Chris?
Yeah, two things, Mayor. The American Blue Judges came through our town last week, very, very impressed, and all of you were a part of it, so thank you for that. And I'd like to plug our Public Works Expo on Saturday. Brad and I will have our almost entire staff there with lots of equipment, and it's not just for little kids. We've got eighty-five-year-olds up there running the harvest truck, so it's for all ages, it's going to be better and better, it's free, a lot of giveaways, and it's right down at the park. So attend to, please have you and your family show up, and you'll have a good time. Thank you.
Bob Tweedy?
Josh, you're a true gentleman and a genuine professional. It's been an honor and a pleasure to serve with you. Thank you for helping educate me, and that's not easy on all things planning and zoning, and best wishes in a well-deserved and long, healthy retirement.
Brad?
Welcome to my, thank you.
Lori Tucker?
Josh, you will always be my cheerful friend. Thank you. I'm very pleased to be here with you. I'm going to miss that accent.
Here's your wire, Josh.
Keith?
Lori Tucker.
Yes, thank you. And I echo whatever everyone has said, Josh has been a real mentor to me, has pulled me out of the rafters on more than one occasion because he's so calm. But I just wanted to give a plug, the library tomorrow night at five o'clock from five to seven, lots of families and children will come to the library and build our logo out of Legos for the Epic Lego Brick Wall. So I think we're going to have a big turnout, if you can pop in, that would be awesome. Cynthia, stand up, she has digitized the logo and made this amazing plan to get everybody to build brick by brick our logo out of Legos, it's a mouthful, hope to see you there. Thanks.
All right, Lori.
Yes, I have a couple of things, and I don't know if everyone knows, Jac is actually my twin. We were both assigned a twin, we share the same birthday. So I'm going to not only miss your professional twin work with me, but I'm going to miss celebrating with you. Mayor and council, I have included an updated trans compliance calendar in your folder. We have pushed back the presentation for the general fund budget to June 21st, and everything moves down one, one meeting. This gives the council the same number, number of meetings to review the general fund budget before setting the maximum millimeter. We were set to set it a little earlier, this will be a little about two weeks before the due date.
All right, thank you. Jac?
Just thank you again for all your kind words. I live just down the road, and I have no intention of ever moving again anywhere. I'm gonna be particularly interested in watching this city grow, watching how the seeds that we planted the last 10 years, how they develop and how they blossom. The genetics are true to me, I've still got another 20 to 25 years left to me, so the clock is ticking, and I am watching. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I will tell you all, a confession is a deep, dark, professional secret for city attorneys, we hate planning work. Planning matters. And lawyers and planners just don't speak the same language very often, but I've given it to Jac, and he made my job so easy because he's such a good writer and such a good wordsmith. And I will miss him, and it's gonna be big shoes to fill. The other dark secret that I'll share with you guys is that Jac is a virtuoso jazz guitar player and blues guitar player. And so look for him around at your local venues.
All right, council member, Mayor.
I was gonna ask you, Jac, what your 2025 year bucket list was like, and how between you and Bob, and some of the things, I'm glad you're sticking around. I'll tell you, you know, I've known you for 10 years, and we served on some Horizon teams together, but, and we were able, Taveres was fortunate, I guess we were blessed, to be able to reload when Bill Neron left, and reload when Nancy Barnett left. Boy, you're gonna be a tough one, because you really, really, really know that aspect of Taveres, which might seem to most people boring, but it's so vital and so important, and you nailed it every time. Every time we have something, every first and third one, we stand up, have that hand up in the air, ready to give your presentation, always so well prepared. I'm gonna miss you, and like I said, I still serve on a couple of Horizon committees with you, so hoping we have a great transition from there. You're gonna be a tough act to follow, Jac. Youth council, that was a lot of fun. You know, I know you were nervous today, but you know, it does take a little while. You can't get up there on the first shot and expect them, you know, everybody's gonna be talking, discussing, and not gonna be nervous. You did a great job, it was a great year. I think this mayor's youth council gave the mayor a lot of credit for coming up with this, and, and I think it took off and was very exciting to be able to watch it, have you take part in this, and continue to study your local government. You'd be surprised how the everyday local government has more effect on your life than even beyond, the governments beyond you. So, great job, and it was really fun to watch you up here discussing, and it seemed as if you were starting to get more into it as little time went on, and to, it got a little bit longer. I know you guys would have been a little bit more, a little less scared and nervous up here. So great job, youth council. The American Bloom thing, I had so much fun with that. I know the judges came to the museum and toured it. I threw them a little bit off schedule, we were there a little bit over an hour at the museum. They were wonderful, great judges, and I know Taveres did it out of ballpark, I just know they did. From what I hear, we knocked it out of ballpark with these judges. Very excited to see where this is gonna, when October comes, when we hear more from these judges, what's gonna happen. Is there, I believe, is there something at the library next week, like next Wednesday at 2 o'clock, Cynthia? For American Bloom, could you tell us?
Yes, the 24th at 2 o'clock, and it'll be the American Bloom presentation by Tracy as well, as ways that you can be involved, even though the judges have already been here, it's continuing to grow, and so that we can keep those seeds lasting and grow.
Very well put, yeah, because it doesn't end here. This is a continuous, this is an everyday thing, this American Bloom, and we're part of it. And again, I think that we knocked it out of the ballpark, and, you know, Tracy did a wonderful job, and I'm glad it's, she's, they just paved the path to American Bloom. Just a little history lesson, happy birthday to Lake County. We were formed 130 years ago this week. You have the founder of our town, Major Alexander St. Clarence, a lot of people don't know, he was actually the guy who conceived Lake County, because when he came here in 1875, he wanted to move the capital here, build the city, move the capital here from Tallahassee down to central Florida. And he came and he had purchased a property here in June 1880, he began building the city that was gonna be, not only the capital, but he needed a county to be able to have a county seat, like what Taveres is today. He knew if we were still Orange County, there was no way he was gonna be able to take the county seat away from Orlando, so he needed his own county in 1887, and Lake County was established 130 years ago today, conceived by our own Major Alexander St. Clarence. Oh, by the way, Major Alexander St. Clarence still has three homes still standing today, one in Taveres, one in Orlando, and one in Jacksonville. And I visit them all, beautiful homes.
All right, thank you, Bob. Thank you, council member of August.
Congratulations, Jac. Hope you enjoyed the free time that you have, but I hope you come back to city council anyways. It was wonderful working with you, Carly. I don't know if you can do this again next year, but I hope you do it if you can. And I have nothing else to report.
All right, council member Smith?
Yeah, I've got, I've got a couple of things. The first, the first thing, when is the American Bloom vote? End of October? October? The second thing is, I want to speak directly to the, to the youth council and the city of, or the Taveres High School. I'm hoping that the youth council and the Taveres High School got as much out of this as we council members did. I truly enjoyed Reagan's final report, she did an excellent job. Very bright student, all the youth council members, if people in the audience don't know, these are all high school students, learning about local government. I'm hoping that it either opened your eyes to doing work for the public, or getting involved in the public, like, like we are to do something good for your fellow citizens. Bob is absolutely 100% correct. The local government has more impact on your lives than the state or federal government usually, so really get involved in your government. You did a fantastic job, Taveres High School, I hope you enjoy it, I hope we can continue this and grow it. I hope we have a line of people waiting to come up and do this, because you experienced a youth, five young candidates. So, thank you very much, and Mayor, thank you for bringing that up. It was a wonderful idea, and I believe it worked out very well. Jac, great work with, blah, 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 everybody's saying great things about you, you're a good dude. I wanna hear you, I wanna hear you play the jazz.
Your dad, Kirby, was the first resident that I met here in Taveres.
Oh, that's very nice, good, good, thank you for that. And just a couple of things for everybody out there, today is National Telecommunications and Information Safety Day, and not only that, today is National Walnut Day.
Vice Mayor, we sing our little songs.
Yes, this was brought up earlier, and this might be better in our new business, but yeah, I agree, these, these microphones, for those of you in the audience that don't know, I mean, these things are very cumbersome, they don't, you don't have like a neck where you can move them around very well, it only goes up and down. So I mean, and I feel like, so it is a little bit difficult, so I don't know, you know, bring this up on our, you know, new business or what, but I think we ought to look into some more.
We've got a budget that's coming for you, and certainly, we can, you will, again, give you the price. I think it's been every year or so, and I've always cut it. We get the opportunity to put back in.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's what I'm, what's...
My car's not on.
Blah, 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 looks like we are gonna replace it if it goes broke.
I didn't realize this piece came in and out until he just said it. I'm, look, look, the piece goes in and out. And then I did mine in and out, and then it went off. Listen.
It's glorious, I think, very new years of overall lights lineup. Tell the microphone.
Look at that.
Look at all of our...
I have got the power.
It's a Christmas.
I'll try to continue, I don't know, like I said, I'm sorry, I have a hard time hearing you, but I do want to also mention about the American Bloom, Chris and Tracy did a wonderful job, and all the staff that participated in that, you know, I think it was a wonderful program. And Lou Boygus, I thank you for opening up to your home, that was a, you know, nice send-off of the judges, had a little reception over there, and I want to thank you for doing that, that was very gracious of you and your husband, so thank you for that. Oh, and then, I want to welcome Avalon Park Village, they had their ribbon cutting grand opening, they're in downtown Taveres now, they have a presence down there. They had a little Cinco de Mayo party, and I think that was great. Love to see them have a presence in the downtown area, and I look forward to them opening up there, or, you know, doing their groundbreaking real soon. And Cynthia, do I understand that you've got a grant recently for the library? Was that my understanding, that you were able to get a $10,000 grant for the library?
Yes, that is correct.
Tell us a little bit about that. I think everybody needs to hear about these grants at the state of Taveres.
Thank you. Yes, we have applied for a grant through Niagara Care's Model Water Company, and it's for $10,000 to pursue funding to purchase a kit for books, it would be two books, a bag, a bottle of water, a nursery rhyme CD, and a library card application for us to present to each new baby that is born at Waterman, Florida Waterman Hospital. And we received word on Friday that we have a lot more hoops to jump through and paperwork, but we have been accepted, or we've received the grant, and so now we'll be totally forward with that information.
No, thank you very much for putting that hard work in. Like I said, I know these grants are not easy to apply for, not easy to get. You know, our staff here at Taveres, I mean, they did a wonderful job getting these grants, so, like I said, I just, I just want a little public to know, we've reached out to them, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
And I also want to thank our youth council, did a wonderful job, it was great seeing you guys up here, and hopefully you will continue with that, and, you know, look forward to, hopefully we'll be able to do this program again next year. Is that working that?
Yes, working.
All right. And also, I just want to thank the audience for being here, you know, our doors are open anytime, please, you know, feel free to come. You know, it's nice to have a full house like this, and I just want to thank you very much for Governor participating in this and sharing your viewpoints on, you know, what you want to see done with the golf course, and just thank you very much for coming. Jac, I just want to thank you for all that you've done for the city of Taveres, and we're gonna miss you, but, you know, you're gonna do great in whatever you do, so thank you very much, and Mayor, that's all I have.
All right. So, I'm not gonna be repetitive, you know how much I don't like that, but I agree with what they said, Jac. Thank you for all you've done, all you, Bay Tree and Fox Run and all you people residents who came out to, to talk about the golf course, I mean, we do listen, and I so appreciate y'all coming out, because most of the time, we make decisions and then you see somebody on, on the street later, and they complain. And I like to see people here, because we truly do listen, because you have a different viewpoint than we do, so we do listen. The mayor's youth council, I'm so proud, so very proud of y'all, again, I know everyone said it, but, but y'all just, you were really shining tonight, so thank you for volunteering to, and being selected to, for this process, y'all did great. And so without further objection, this meeting's adjourned.